Are you?
Yeah.
But I am ready to eat. Mogan's ready to eat.
I can't believe you're just gone so quickly.
That's almost all she can say.
Already busy my fifth.
She better behave her Santa's not getting away.
I checked my emails yesterday or whatever there was that be sure and save the date for the person who ordered it. What's wrong with you?
All right, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna call the special meeting of the Ojai City Council for November 19th, 2013 to order. Welcome all members of the Libby Bowl Foundation. It's nice to have you here. We have a quorum of our council, so I got started. I see that there's some missing seats. Hopefully, everybody will be here, but for those of you that are here, welcome. It's always a pleasure. I'm looking forward to hearing from you tonight. Could we have a roll call, please, of the council?
Councilmember Laura.
Here.
Councilmember Clapp. Councilmember Smith. Mayor Pro Tem Strobel.
Present.
Mayor Blatt.
Here.
And if I could ask Chair Barnhart to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two discussion items on our agenda tonight. One was an added agenda item that we didn't anticipate when we first set this up, but we will be able to take as much time on the Libby Bowl operations, which is our first discussion item as needed. The second item has to do with the repairs on the roof of the museum. We'll take that up after we're done with the Libby Bowl Foundation matters. Welcome, Councilwoman Clapp. You're here now?
I am.
Okay. Oh, and Councilwoman Smith, welcome. I'm really looking forward to tonight. I'm feeling as though there's been a lot of activity at Libby Bowl. I have gotten a lot of excellent feedback of the programs and the shows that have been there, so I want to thank everybody on the Foundation for all your hard work. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Barney to kind of give us your report.
Well, thank you, Mr. We put a little packet together of these documents that they're not in any particular shape or form in terms of importance, but we wanted to take this opportunity to... Wanted to take this opportunity to... I can even hear myself now. Hopefully educate you as to what we've been up to, share with you some of the challenges that we've had and some of the successes as well. And so, the front page, we don't have supporting documents for all these things. Some of them are verbal, but the first page, we go through this quickly, and then we can come back and review everything that you want to talk about in detail, is just to remind you who the Libby Bowl Foundation is and our contacts and that sort of thing. We didn't have everyone here, although the entire Foundation was invited, we thought it'd be a little overwhelming to have everyone here to visit with you tonight.
Excuse me, President. Would you mind introducing who is here because we are televising this?
Certainly. Down at the left is Pete Els. Beth Sutherland is our manager of Libby Bowl, Steve Olson, and Jim Malone. And we're missing Esther Wachtel, who's going to be here as well, so.
She was gonna be here, or she can't?
She was. She had said she would be here, so I think she's just running late. We've submitted our... The next thing is the business plan that I won't go through this in detail. I think we submitted this to you at the time that we were looking for a long-term extension on the arrangement with the Foundation. But we stand true to the basic principles here, and we're continuing to work towards meeting this. The next section was, if you had the opportunity to participate, we had a free movie series that we were in joint venture with Alliance Club that was very successful. We found that when events are free, we don't have any problem filling the seats in the Bowl. And it was a family-oriented program. And Beth, there were three, is that correct?
Three.
Yeah. And it was fun, popcorn, that sort of thing. The next is this illustration, and what we've done is given you an outline of the 20 different events that we had throughout the summer season, beginning in March, and as recently as last week with the Film Festival. A number of these were nonprofit organizations that you're familiar with and some of what we call our legacy groups, as well as there were two items that the Libby Bowl Foundation produced, namely the Jonas Smith Concert and the Sips and Sounds. I couldn't help but notice that our mayor was at that event. I think the people enjoyed it very much. Beth, do you suppose you might comment on a couple of the reasons for these other ones? We had booked these, and then they weren't able to...
The Rains of Hope and Brain. Brain is actually an acronym for brain-injured rehabilitation, et cetera, and so on. Rains of Hope decided to... Actually, both of them decided to postpone their events at Libby Bowl because headliners, in other words, their number-one choice for musicians could not meet their, you know, their event dates. And Shataqua, as some of you may already know, is in the works. It's simply been postponed until 2014.
I might end... Those of you that know our friend Leslie Clark, Nomad Gallery, never sets her sights too low. She was looking to have an event there this summer. She invited Carlos Santana to be the headliner, and we were very excited about it, but unfortunately, he declined to come to Ojai. The next little item here is a performance guide. Beth put together a wonderful piece last year that talked about the various events that were scheduled, and we're gonna work on a new one for the coming year, once we have a schedule lined up of participants. The next item that we bring to your attention is basically a single-event venue, and it's a pro rata, but this is basically what we're looking at in terms of the cost to put on a single production. And it was basically just about the same for the Sips and Sounds that we had, but without getting into all the fine detail, you can see that we're looking at operating costs around $21,000, and that if we're successful in selling tickets, there's a very little margin that goes to the Libby Bowl Foundation. This has been part of the problem that we've had in recruiting and getting professional producers to come into the Bowl. Whether we were under the impression that if we just hung out a sign that said we're open for business, and people would be banging down the door, what we have found, and we've talked to dozens of people, is that they recognize that they can work very, very hard and try to promote the tickets and advertise and have this fixed expense for this kind of money with little return. And if they're not successful, they can also lose a lot of money. And so, we just wanted to give you an idea. This is like a single production. We did go to some producers, and they came up with a concept of a new festival that would be a multi-event weekend production, and they mapped the whole thing out for us, exactly what it would take. They knew exactly what to do, how to do it. And these individuals have been tried and true on their ability to produce events. They then give us a list of the folks that they had personal contacts with, that they thought that they would be able to attract, and you'll probably recognize quite a few of these names. And then finally, they say, now here's what the cash flow looks like. And it presumes that the board would raise $25,000, that we would also get corporate sponsorships, plus the ticket sales, and then they go through all the expense and the cash flow, and then take a look at the artist's expense. They're looking at $25,000 for Friday night, $25,000 Saturday, $35,000 Saturday night, and $15,000 and $20,000 on Sunday. The bottom line is that their estimated costs were close to $175,000, and with really good ticket sales, that we would gross $191,000. Well, we just about choked when we saw that. Obviously, we don't have those types of assets. This is something that may be a pipe dream, but somewhere down the line, it would be great if we were in a situation where we could actually do something like this. And it would be great for the merchants, for the restaurants, the hotels, but this is the type of expense when you're doing a real professional production, what it looks like. The next document is what is called a rider. Any of the groups that come into Libby Bowl and understand that we're not a theater, so we have to bring in sound and lights, and basically, we just have an empty shell. It's the prettiest empty shell that, you know, that I could imagine. But they basically come up with their requirements. And Beth, I wonder if you could just tell us about the rider that you received that was the $17,000 free concert?
We had the... Right, the Libby Bowl Foundation had been speaking with a representative of an artist who was... Who had been indicating for some time that he or she would like to perform at Libby Bowl and would do a free concert. And after some dialogue and requesting the rider, it turned out to be a 17... And this is a very typical example. Upon reviewing the rider, it was 17 pages, and free, very quickly, free meant the headliner, the artist that we're speaking of, would donate his/her talent. But the rider, as soon as one started going through that, by the time you provided backline, sound, lighting, we were very quickly, just with three line items, at $17,000. So, our free gratis concert quickly became, you know, we're just not in that position right now. But that's a very typical example of what a rider... And that's why there's a rider, so that everyone's very clear on what all costs are, what they look like, and what's expected, what's expected up front. Typically, an artist's fee is 50% up front, and so forth, but that's the rider.
Yeah. Well, it also included they wanted sweets at the Ojai Valley Inn, and they specified the size of the shrimp cocktails, the cases of water sparkling, and, you know, it just... It's on... Yeah. So, anyway, the next item we wanted to talk to you was this initiative that we're... It's in a continual process called the Bowl Ambassadors. We invited people from a list of about 1,000 folks that we had emails and addresses for, and invited them to the Bowl, and we gave them a backroom tour, so they could see what the Bowl looked like behind the scenes, and asked them, we handed out pencil and paper, and asked them for everybody to write down three ideas of what do you think we could do to make the Bowl better, what kind of programs might you be interested in seeing, among another questions or two. And we, all of a sudden, got all these things. We had like 75 great ideas from the folks. And then we said, would you have any interest, based upon your availability, to help us to get the word out, tell your friends what's going on at the Bowl? And so, in any event, we're continuing to work with these folks and hopefully have them become our ambassadors. The next item is basically what we kind of glossed over, but is the social media. We've been using a lot of traditional media, newspapers, postcards. We put things in people's mailboxes. And anyway, I think that we saw the light that social media, Facebook and Twitter were the way that younger people were communicating today, as well as a lot of the artists and musicians. And Pete, I wonder if you might, and Beth, take over on what you've been doing to help us on that regard?
Well, if I understood it, I would. We actually... The lady that actually does the social media for the resort actually has taken on the Libby Bowl as well, as part of kind of our donation to the Bowl, but she's very versed in every angle of social media in terms of Facebook and Twitter. And so, she's gotten us up to speed very, very quickly, and that will only get better, I think, as we move forward. But she's really as good as I think I've ever worked with regarding that. And I can't tell you all the spiders and all of the things that go with it, but she's very versed on it, and I think she's made an impact already with our Facebook followers and that type of thing, so. Well, I think we'll see some good progress there.
Thanks, Pete. This next deal is just a... I don't know how many of you had the opportunity to attend, but our friend Joan Kemper and some local artists did a production of, that was called "I Do, I Do," that was at Matilah, and it was a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday event. We priced the tickets such that seniors and young people had an opportunity to get lower-priced tickets, and it was very successful. And they did this with all the proceeds that went to the Libby Bowl, and it was close to $13,000 that was raised, and we thank them so much. The next item is this production fund. And with the creation of the Libby Bowl Foundation, we kind of envisioned ourselves as just being the facility manager, and to assist organizations to get in the Bowl, anything we could do to help them, and that sort of thing, with any proceeds that were derived would be plowed right back into Libby Bowl, in terms of maintenance fund. It's part of our agreement with the city. Well, we soon found out that we've kind of morphed into, not that we have great expertise in this area, but we're learning a lot during this, you know, first year or two, that we're becoming a production organization. And all of the producers that we've talked to that have come to us, they tell us they have these contacts, they know how to fill seats. Who's gonna be the banker? And with our limited assets at this point, our hands are tied, but it is our goal to establish a production fund in addition to our maintenance fund, so that we will be able to take some of the risk. And the theory being that if we make a little money on one show, or we lose a little bit of money on another, it'll come out in the wash, and that we have to have some capital in order to get these producers to work with us. And that's not to say that they wouldn't have some skin in the game as well, but it's our goal to build up this fund. One of the other things is, the next page is, we talk about the presenter's circle of getting folks to underwrite, meaning corporations, individuals, organization, to underwrite various things from particular shows to buying season tickets, et cetera. And this is just an outline. We have not begun this yet. One of our members who is not here tonight has graciously agreed to, you know, charge forward on this particular deal. The next item, I really wish Esther were here, because she is the goober on it, and that is the Shataqua. But if you're not familiar with the concept, there is a place in upstate New York called Shataqua, New York, and it was an old mill town, and they soon found themselves, around the turn of the century, in dire trouble, and had to reinvent themselves. And so, they put together discussion groups, and I'm told that it spread like wildfire, and that there, at one time around the turn of the century, there were like 10,000 people at the beach in Santa Monica that would come and hear people discuss various points of views on subjects. And given the fact that agriculture is the driving force in the economy in Ventura, we thought that the future of food would be a great subject. And there are a lot of differing opinions, whether it's small-family farmers or the large corporate farmers, or the organic farmers versus the big production. GMOs are a subject that it's difficult to get people in the same room to have a civil conversation about it. People saying, if you invite Monsanto, I'm not coming. You know, just, there's nothing to talk about. So, Tom Kraus, one of our board members, is championing this cause, and we weren't ready, but in this timeframe this year, but we think we'll have a really good program next year. We're really looking forward to that. When you have a chance, take a look at that. The last item is, just wanted to share some of the numbers with you through the end of September. This is on a cash basis, Jim, and so, some of the bills aren't exactly in, and perhaps there's some additional deposits. But basically, it gives you an idea of where we stand. In the prior year, we were $20,000 in the hole, and for this time period, we've turned around, and we're in much better shape. But as you can see, the highlights of this lead me to be proud of the Foundation in that while the numbers are not very large, we've managed it very well, and our expenses, our overhead, has been very, very low. Food and beverage, well, for the beverage side of things, we've partnered with Alliance Club. They provide professional licensed people to provide beverages. For the events we've had food at, we've been able to secure the food at basically cost-plus, and through generous donations and contributions from a lot of folks. And many of those things aren't even actually in the numbers. It's just goods and services, so. That is basically an overview. What would you suggest we do in terms of Q and A?
All right. Does anyone from the council have any questions of Barney or any other members of the Foundation? Thank you. It was excellent presentation. No one has any questions? Mr. Clark?
I don't have anything particular in mind, but I just wanted to comment that, leading up to the negotiation of the long-term agreement that we have, we had a series of meetings that included the mayor and Councilmember Smith. And during the course of the negotiation, there was quite a bit of dialogue back and forth, which I thought was very productive. And that was kind of the genesis for the idea of getting a larger group like this together. The feeling that we all have a lot to learn about Libby Bowl, about how it's managed, and what the various parties can do. And so, I really appreciate that the board has taken, you know, has taken the effort to put together this package. And I'm trying to think of what's a good way to get more conversation going, because I think there probably are questions, but I'm not sure how to draw them out. So, I'm certainly open to anybody else's suggestion on how best to do that.
Well, I think I was, myself and Mayor Blatt, were in on the... Myself and Mayor Blatt.
Were in on these conversations that actually gave rise to the concept that not only do they need a fund for basically maintenance, but we also need a fund for production. So, I'm very happy to see the steps that have been taken since then to go ahead and get that, because it became very apparent that in order to bring in Class A acts with the expectation level that they expected, there had to be a production fund in which they can draw in case things went awry. So, I'm glad to see the steps that have been taken in that direction.
And I would agree. There had to be some entity that was able to underwrite the shows. The city wasn't in a position that it could do it, and the Foundation wasn't in a position at that time financially to be able to underwrite the shows. But I think it's really important that we are able to underwrite the shows in order to attract the talent that I believe we can. So, I think you ought to implement that program for the annual contributions as soon as you can. I love, I think it's a great idea. It's a... I know that most of the organizations in the valley that need sustaining financing are doing it exactly that way, with annual contributions. And I think anybody in Ojai that understands the importance of the Libby Bowl, not only to our economy, but to the citizens to have a place to go, is not gonna be objection... There's not gonna be many objections to being able to, even if it's a small annual contribution. But we've got to get it up to that, I think, to the $25,000 to $30,000 fund as quickly as we can.
You know, maybe it would be helpful to talk a little bit more in detail about the two productions that you did do, the Jonas Smith and the Sips and Sound. You know, how those were financed, and how you got the talent for those, and just everything that went into making those productions successful.
Well, the Sips and Sounds was kind of an off-spin from a year ago, when we had the Dave Mason concert, and Brian Nova, who was the guitar player, just loved Ojai and said, I want to come back, and I want to do something. And over the next course of the next several months, Beth and Brian worked diligently on attracting other musicians, namely Brian's go-to musicians in Los Angeles, although he doesn't live in LA. And we had some local talent that included a young man that was a graduate of Ojai school system, and he opened the show, and we had our own Roger Kellaway, who was tickled. He was at the opening of the Libby Bowl a year and a half ago. And the musicians worked for a lot less than they would normally have worked for. We kept our expenses low. We did have to bring in the lights, but I coincidentally happened to have some old band equipment from my rock and roll days, and we brought that in. And one of our fellow board members happens to be a restaurateur and provided some food. And we have a very, very good friend in Ventura Rentals that while we can't go to them every time and ask them to comp us, but was very gracious about pricing. And so, it's a community effort. And so, that worked out well. Steve can really reflect on the Jonas Smith, because... Steve can really reflect on the Jonas Smith because of a younger generation, his daughter had the contact. And I couldn't tell you until he brought it up at the meeting who Jonas was, but it was a great show.
It was a great show. Jonas Smith was an East Coast musician who, could you hit the light station? Yeah. East Coast musician who was located to
To Santa Barbara and LA. And he offered to play for a very, very reasonable price. I mean, it was like 1,500 bucks, I think, to play with his full band. And so I picked up Milton Kelly and yeah, Martin Young, both Ojai boys. Martin Young played with Clint Black for like 20 years, great musicians. And then we picked up a group from Ventura. And they were, I mean, Martin and Milton played for free and opened our concert. We had two front-page Ojai Valley News articles on it. We sent out flyers throughout the valley. And we also paid for some advertisement. Ticket sales weren't great, but everybody that was there, you know, it was a very good show. I know that, and Barney supplied the sound system. It was like our first run on the new sound system. And everything worked great and that's our sound system from now on. So ticket sales weren't great, like I said. So, you know, it's really hard, even if you advertise everything. You know, I expected to get a lot more local people to come, being that we did have local musicians who are pretty well-known here in town to attend. So I don't know what the answer is.
How much were the tickets?
I think they were 20 bucks.
How many people came?
150 or something. It was pretty poorly attended, yeah. I mean, the tickets were cheap. I mean, anybody that went had, could have attended without a problem.
If I might just make a comment, that's, I'm the treasurer of our fine board here. And that's the conundrum we find ourselves in. I mean, people want the Class A acts, but they don't want to spend any money for the tickets. And, you know, to be able to get a viable operation, we got to be able to sell tickets at something more than 15 or 20 dollars and you got to fill up the seats and if you want to get a Class A act. And right now, that's not how it works. So the Sips and Sounds, which was, I thought, very successful, I mean, great performances. You know, we basically broke even on that and lost a little money on the Jonah contract. So it's a, that's the challenge we're going to face as a board, is to be able to get the right number of people in the bowl and who are willing to pay the price to do that, as well as being supported by the community and their hotels and the restaurants and everybody else. So it's a, it's a pushing a big ball up a hill right now.
Right. The, you know, issue from the beginning, talking to promoters, and we've talked to, I'm going to say dozen promoters, that, you know, some very large ones like Nederlander or somebody like that, is that they all say, "Yeah, we'd love to come, but we don't want to take the risk." And that's always the problem, is nobody's willing, I don't blame them, you know, to take the risk on losing money on coming to an event in Ojai. They love the venue, you know, everybody loves the venue. But it's the risk factor with these people that maybe with this production fund, we'd be able to also take some of that risk, which we're not able to do right now.
You know, one of the other things about the Sips and Sounds that Beth did such a terrific job in, could you tell them a little bit about that group of young women that you had that were volunteers and ushers and they were so great?
The, you caught me, I'm having a senior moment. Yes. Well, our volunteers, it was a group of 12 women. And I'm so sorry, I'm totally blanking. So when I think of it, I'll like chime back in.
Well, let me describe it. They came in a van.
Yeah.
And they were disadvantaged young women that had had some problems. They were smartly dressed and they acted as ushers and information and they looked sharp and they were polite and they had a fun time doing it.
Was it community service sounds?
No, 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 no. It's, oh, I just, I could kick myself. No, they actually, for those of you that attend the Lavender Festival, help me out, anybody that attends the Lavender Festival, they're the group of women who, they are in a, basically a rehabilitation program. Yes, Teen Challenge, thank you. I knew if I kept talking, yes, the Teen Challenge program, which that name is, that name is really misleading because they're not teens, they're of all ages. And typically, they are women who are in recovery from substance abuse with very varied backgrounds. And so in contacting them, the long story short is by engaging in an event like Sips and Sounds or the Lavender Festival, I would imagine, there's so many aspects of an event that allows these women to gain some professional experience, whether it's working in a box office or in this case, they were extremely valuable in interfacing, excuse me, with our VIP lounge and, you know, just catering aspects, really just being able to, you know, on the spot, make decisions, make sure everything's, you know, rolling. So Teen Challenge is who we're talking about and, you know, they're phenomenal.
I was going to, to Beth's credit, I wasn't aware of how some of the wine tastings worked. And I found out just shortly before that we were on the hook for buying cases and cases of wine. And if we didn't sell it, we own it. It wasn't a problem. If there wasn't anything left over, it was very successful.
Councilwoman Clapp, did you have a comment?
I have a few questions. It sounds like the bottom line is you're not, you're having a hard time getting Class A acts. What would you consider a Class A act?
Well, we're told that there's a price break. We're talking about folks that would work for, say, $25,000 or less. We certainly can't get the big headliners. And then those people, that's a lot of money to us, that's not much in the entertainment business.
Do they have name recognition?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And this isn't a kind word, but I mean, some of them, you could say, well, they were, you know, one-hit wonders or names. Oh, I remember that group from 15, 20 years ago, those sorts of folks. And they make a lot of money on the casino circuit because they can pay them whatever they want. They're not concerned about making money on a performance, they want to get people into the casino.
Okay, I have a couple other questions. So what would the price the ticket have to be for one of those Head, Class A acts?
We would have to probably sell tickets around $40.
Okay. And I forgot how many seats are in the Libby Bowl.
900 and
972.
972. How many seats did we lose on the lawn?
We can, we can put another 200 to 300 on the lawn easily.
But people don't like to sit there because they can't see.
Right.
So are there any ideas on how to remedy that?
Well, I know there's a study to build up the lawn so that people can see.
Do you know what it would cost?
It was extraordinary.
I remember it being really expensive.
When Jeff Hayden was here, he was, he worked on that. And in my recollection, I don't remember how, no, it was over 100.
Oh, 100, okay.
It's, basically, you have to create a retaining wall. There were a number of options, but you have to recreate a retaining wall along the border of the grass and the walkways with some sort of way for getting up and down. And then you have to put an awful lot of earth and sort of build it up and then taper it down towards the back.
Handicapped access too.
Yeah, and then you have to work around the tree. There's a pretty good-sized oak out there on the lawn that you can't bury. So they looked at it pretty closely the first year and then sort of shelled it. And I think they're, you know, they've got a new director coming in and she's pretty ambitious, so we'll see what happens. But that's a chunk of dough.
That is a chunk of dough. So how do you get a Class A act to come here? Because that's really where you're going to make your money.
Correct.
And it sounds like it's, I mean, why would they come here with only 972 seats when they can go to, they're better off down at Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza?
Right. Well, what we, as we're learning, we think that we're probably never going to be that big Friday night performance. But our hope is that a theatrical, musical group, whatever, that is working their way down the west coast, say they're in San Francisco and they're on their way to San Diego and Los Angeles, that we would be the Wednesday, Thursday night venue. That they would consider, if we get the traction going and the word gets out, "Boy, that Ojai Libby Bowl is great." That they would say, you know, "We'd be willing to work for less. Why stay in a hotel room and watch television when they could be playing in Ojai?" You know, on one of these off nights.
Why did Nederlanders say they weren't interested?
Well, there was kind of a hidden agenda. But they were, had their eyes on Ventura, not Ojai. And if you know what happened in Ventura, they were going to build their own Libby Bowl. And that did not work out. We may have a new shot at it. Because apparently, they've given up hopes of doing that.
So where they going to build it, Foster Park?
Behind the City Hall.
No, it was above the City Hall in the Botanical Gardens or something like that.
I think this was an idea that was incubating with who? The city council? Now, I mean, I don't think the $40 or $45 ticket. I mean, UCSB Performing Arts catalog is full of events that are, sell tickets at that price range. But there are touring, which is whatever they're, I don't know what that holds, it probably holds about 3,000 seats. I always saw that Libby Bowl could be a step in that, on that way. They have performances on Tuesday night and whatever, but if you notice what the season is, it's really kind of slow in the summer. It's geared more towards the winter and the fall, which of course, for us, being outdoors, does not necessarily fit. But I don't think, they think they have a viable program going. And I always saw us as perhaps a step between UCSB's, our, I'll just, it'll take me an hour or an hour and 15 minutes, one way to get to USC, USCSD. And I said, "The next stop is Thousand Oaks, or the next stop is Northridge, let's say, where there's another big university." Why wouldn't we do that stop on a weeknight if it was in the warm season for some of these groups? But they really pretty much go dead in the summer. But the acts they have are very varied in all sorts of performing arts. Some of them are definitely world-class, some of them are a little bit more esoteric. But gosh, they have awfully good events, so.
The other thing you need to remember, though, is that on a Wednesday or Thursday, we're going to be really drawing upon our own population here. People aren't going to drive from Los Angeles on a Wednesday night, most likely.
They're not going to drive from Ventura.
They're not going to drive to Ventura.
You don't want to go down the hill, they don't want to come up the hill. You know, something that Raines did, it is really, really genius, and they did this for years. They ask if you live in Ojai, you know? And part of it is, they want to track what people in Ojai purchase so that they make sure that they have in the store what people purchase. What I find interesting is there were 150 people at that concert. It would really be nice to know why in a valley of 30,000 people, we were only able to draw 150. Have, is there any way to do some outreach into the community itself and say, "Why aren't you going to these concerts?" Because even during the Ojai Day, Jonathan McHugh was down there giving this concert and he was really good. There was like 20 people sitting in the audience. Our own citizens aren't participating. You can't count on, I know you'd like to have, bring the tourists in for this reason, but you can't count on the tourists. And I think Raines understood that decades ago. You have to, you have to appeal to your local audience. So there's some sort of disconnect there, it seems. Why aren't people attending our own events? I don't have the answer, but I think it's important.
If I could address that, you're spot on. And we're able to collect some information from our ticket sales. People that use brown paper tickets punch in their zip code as required. And so Beth has, at least now has a basis of looking at the demographics, where the people are from and that sort of thing. And one of the more successful shows, which was Lissy, you had a lot of people from out of town that came because she has a following. So it wasn't just the locals.
Edward Sharp. Yeah, he's a local guy.
Yeah, yeah.
And
Go ahead.
I don't want to interrupt you. I just want to add, each, whether we're talking about UCSB, the Lissy concert, the Jonah concert, each of those concerts are extremely different. UCSB, its location, its proximity to dense population of students. UCSB having the financial means, certainly through numerous grants, underwriters, et cetera. That, it's sort of a picture in and of itself. So to compare UCSB, other than programmatically, you know, what, gosh, that, you know, that speaker or this group or is really, you'd really have to pick it apart, line item by line item. So I just want to add to that.
But I, I mean, to me, I would go to one of those weekday UCSB things that start at 8 o'clock if it was in Ventura.
Great, yeah.
The Fappens and I'll Vista is a home of, but I'm old. If I was 25, I probably wouldn't hesitate. So, you know, I think a lot of it had, why aren't more local people or Ventura people, where it's only a 30-minute drive, would they come up for a Tuesday night or a Wednesday night performance?
And I just wanted to, then, Lissy, the Lissy concert does come up a lot in terms of numbers. She has a following. She has a very strong social media following. That is indicative of a successful concert. It is also, we have seen Lissy at Libby Bowl only in conjunction with Changing Tides Orphanage. That's Vance Sims, Cheryl Sims, that is their project, that is their love in Haiti. That family in and of themselves has an enormous following, friends, family. So that's a consideration specifically for that concert and why the Lissy concert is perpetually successful. Ed Sharp and the Magnetic Zeros. If we, if I, that was a fluke of nature, seriously, that they were able to come to the Libby Bowl. Simply because they have, at the time, they had a band member with a daughter at a nursery school who literally was going to close the doors within two weeks if they didn't have or raise approximately $40,000. They, some of them live in the area, they certainly frequent the area. They have a recording studio in Miners Oaks, et cetera. So there again, not to mention, I mean, this past summer, they played at the Hollywood Bowl. I mean, they're like, you know, they're off the charts. But it was, again, it's a very specific conditions that brought them to Libby Bowl. If we were to entertain, there's no way right now with our financials that we could afford an A-quality group like Ed Sharp and the Magnetic Zeros. It would, it would not be feasible for us. But given the circumstances that, you know, surrounded them, doing a fundraiser for a nursery school, we were extremely fortunate. And what that does, I guess where I'm going with this particular comment is, which, with each of these concerts, whether especially Ed Sharp and the Magnetic Zeros, they are incredibly talented, but more so, they had a very positive experience at Libby Bowl. That works really, really well for the foundation, for Libby Bowl, for the city. Because it's a, in the end, it's a small network. They tell two friends and so on and so on. Just the fact that they have played here is something that we can talk about. It can be in our reports, we can, you know, reflect that in our materials. So it demonstrates that a particular caliber of artists can absolutely perform at Libby Bowl. Completely aside from how many tickets we need to sell to break even, it simply demonstrates that this is a quality venue that people enjoy performing at. And it's going to take a little And it's going to take a little while to get that message out amongst those A-groups or A-minus or B-plusers or whatever. But when the word gets out, that will be very much in our favor. And I think it's, right now, it's patience and doing exactly what Barney has laid out.
Mayor Blatt, I do have a question, and thank you, Libby Bowl Foundation Board Members for being here. We talk about this production fee, so the production fee that's, how is that going to be, is that going to be applied to the fees? Or how's that, are you planning to build up that, that pool?
Through our own production events, if we're successful and we have some surplus, that will go into it. Having organizations and individuals underwrite and buy a whole series season at a higher ticket cost, with some perks, you know, better seats or food or something like this. And slowly but surely build that, that fund up.
This could guarantee kind of bringing in some of the Class A groups that we're looking for? Is that okay? And then, I do have a question about the nonprofits that are participating. Has it been a challenge incorporating them or finding availability in the Libby Bowl calendar? Or is it?
Oh, no, I don't think so at all.
I'd like to make just one comment as well, too. In, in our financials, if you happen to look at them, most of our overhead, and we're pretty lean, other than our largest is a contract with Beth, but the rest of our expenses are pretty modest, accounting fees and insurance and things like that. That's basically being underwritten by donations, by individuals. So, you know, that's keeping the ship afloat. And we try to make money off these performances to build up these funds to do what we hope to do. But obviously, we can't count on that in perpetuity. Because we're asking people to donate for other activities, production funds or whatever, you can't go to the well for all these things. So, I mean, that's kind of our challenge, is to, to be able to raise the funds, to get a pot that allows us to do the performances that we want, and not have to rely on individuals to keep the foundation solvent. So that's something that has to happen here within a pretty short period of time.
Come to him, Clap.
You have a question about the sound. This is quite the daunting requirement. How much of this does the Libby Bowl have?
The Libby Bowl doesn't have any of it, but when the, that gentleman gave it to me, I said, I got that and plus some, so it's not a problem.
You mean, he said he already had it?
No, no, I have it.
Oh, you have it?
Yeah.
You have all of this?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay. So what's your plan to, from this forward? Social media, for social media, but, what is your plan to get?
Perfect example, one of the, the young man that opened at the show, your friend Cole Betels, he and I had lunch, or breakfast the other day, he was the young man you saw me at the restaurant with. And he would like to do a production. He's a jazz pianist, he's, I'm going to say, twenty-five-ish young guy, and he travels with a different circle of folks. He was born and raised in Ojai, but he now works in Los Angeles and has a lot of different musician friends. And he said, here's my idea, and he's going to put a whole packet together of, Los Angeles goes to Ojai. And he's done a little homework, and he said, if I were to rent a number of buses, I could, I could charge, one-way ticket would be fourteen dollars. Bring a bunch of young people, and his musician friends are all on Facebook, and they tweet, and get to a whole different audience of, of younger people. So we, we want to use the social media in that way. And I, he didn't ask me, but I know what he was striving at is, well, what could the Libby Bowl Foundation do?
Right.
To help finance this, because I don't think that he's.
Got the money?
Yeah.
And where would they stay tonight?
Thousands.
You know, can I?
Yes.
You know, that's a good point, because when we were discussing having the Jonah Smith concert, one of the requirements at the beginning was that they were going to require housing for the night, for that night, because they were coming from Mendocino, I think, to Ojai, and then going to Los Angeles. And I know that everybody volunteered their homes. That was on the board, and so we kind of set it up, that they were going to actually stay with the board members. Exactly, right, so.
But they wanted rooms at the inn, was that it?
No, they, they were fine. They, they were excited about it, it's just that they decided to go to home, home that night. You know, one interesting point is talking to the producers, is that they all believe that a, that a three, they call them one-offs, that's the one-night festival or one-night concert that you have. But everybody that thinks that to be more successful is to have a three-day event, you know, rather have, you know, if possible, a Friday, Saturday, Sunday event, and put together a theme, whether it be blues, or country, or spiritual, or, you know, something along those lines. They think that, you know, that would be easier to make a profit doing that. So that's something that I know Beth's looking into also, as we move forward.
Will they come up and stay a few days?
Exactly.
The thing, that no one knows more about this than Pete, but the hotel situation in Ojai on the weekends, we've become a destination place for weddings.
Yeah.
And part of the reason that the guys were looking for rooms, there weren't any hotel rooms available. I mean, if, we were happy to offer our homes to these guys, if need be, but we're looking at, putting them down in Ventura, Oxnard, or something like that.
Have one more question. I'm, I'm no professional manager, or I'm just learning about this. And I'm just curious, a writer, the writer that proposed, I guess, this contract, I guess, for their, he or this performer to come to Ojai, wanted these requirements, right?
Right.
Would, would it, would it have been, would the foundation received a good amount of revenue if the foundation was able to provide these perks? Or is that not how it works? It's how many seats you can, and the price of it? So you have to look at the performer that?
You're going to have a cost for the performer, you're going to have these costs, security costs, you add those up, and that becomes your, the fixed nut that we have to cover. And then it gets, how many seats can we fill? And at what price? I mean, so that's the variable. So if we had a production fund of, from a hundred thousand dollars, you could maybe roll the dice and take a risk. And if you made five or lost five, you could live with that. But right now, we're not willing to risk twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars on a, on an act that we're not sure that we could sell enough tickets to, to make it whole, because we don't have the resources to absorb more than one of those, and then we're in trouble.
It's, one of the things to follow up with what you're saying, is we don't have any history. And without the history, nobody wants to take the risk. We don't know if we have what I'll characterize as an A-performer on a Wednesday night. We don't have enough A-performers on a Wednesday night to be able to give us any track record of how many seats are going to be sold. If we had that, then it would be easy. But we don't have it. And nobody has it at the initial stages of, of a, you know, a new venue. But you've got to have that in order to be able to entice people to come in, and maybe not have to have the, the guarantee behind it. But from the standpoint of the foundation, you need the guarantee, just, I mean, if we have to guarantee it, we don't have the track record that we know anything about either. So how do you get that?
And, and I like Councilmember Clap's suggestion about asking the community, what would they, by what, who would they be interested in, in seeing, whether it be a singing artist, the theater play, whatever it is. And I think that.
And why aren't they?
Yeah, and I think that, yeah, and ask the question, why aren't they attending? And I think what Beth and Pete always said about the, the social media and how vibrant it's been, and they've had a lot of followers, I think that's a great tool to tap into and really ask the question, why haven't our community participated at these events? Because it sounds like the foundation is, is doing a great job in trying to promote and trying to find acts, it's just a matter of asking the, the community, why aren't you buying tickets? Welcome, Esther.
I'm sorry, I thought it was at seven.
You thought you were early.
I have another quick question. Could you refresh my memory, Rob, on, we changed the surcharge. There used to be nothing for the, or you might know about that. What is, what is it now? I forgot.
So it's, originally, it was, was it two dollars? Or, I think it was two dollars for the, for the for-profits.
And nothing originally for the?
Right. And so is this, in the current one, is, is, is one dollar, is it one dollar for the nonprofits and two dollars for the for-profits? And then it switches over to two dollars for everybody with a long-term contract?
With a long-term, oh, okay, so we're going to do it with everybody? Okay, good.
Yeah, the long-term contract starts.
Yeah, I know we change it, that's a good thing, because where in town is where in town, does it matter if it's a profit or nonprofit? Okay, that's good.
And, and just to differentiate on that, in 2014, the city of Ojai ticket surcharge will be two dollars for each nonprofit ticket that's sold, and two dollars for each commercial ticket that's sold. Thus far, the foundation remains at one dollar per ticket for each of those.
And if I'm not mistaken, most of the events have been nonprofits, correct?
Correct.
So that should help with the, with the maintenance fund? Because it goes directly into the maintenance fund, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Barney, now that Esther's here, do you want to? We kind of went around the table and had a little discussion in your absence, and at one point, he said, you know, I really wish Esther was here, because she knows all about this.
Well, I was leaving the Chautauqua up to you.
Oh. Okay, well, that's, this is a project that we have been working on for about a year, hoping that we would be able to develop the kind of weekend activities that the Ojai Music Festival has. I think in the long run, we would like to have two or three of those kinds of weekends. This was one of the first ones that we've started to work on. It's a very interesting idea. In upstate New York, in the eighteen-fifties, they began a concept of an ideas festival, which is surrounded by all kinds of fun activities, festival kind of activities. It is now a hundred and fifty years old, it supports an entire city, little town, it has, it goes on for four months, people come for two weeks, they have a hotel, they have a day camp, they have all kind of people, it's, it's really huge. It's spread from upstate New York to across the United States in the twenties and thirties. It was in Chautauqua Boulevard and the beach in Santa Monica, which is why we have Chautauqua Boulevard in Santa Monica. It came to Ventura, and we had, for a number of years, at the beach in Ventura, thirty and forty thousand people coming for this kind of a weekend festival. So it seemed like it had some relevance, and we have a facility that between the park and the Bowl, maybe could turn into that. We brought together a group of people, really wonderful group of people, who have been, had decided that the focus for the first year at least would be agricultural issues, because we're a large agricultural county, and we represent a lot of the challenges to food, and food distribution, and food, all the issues surrounding food in Ventura County. And it would be a very apropos thing for us to work on, at least at the beginning. And we put together a really great festival, which was going to happen on November second of this year. Along with that, we put together some panels. And it was one of the most interesting things that has ever happened to me, because I didn't realize how polarized people have become on some of these issues facing food. And we started out with GMOs, genetically modified organisms, and, and found that we could not bring together on one panel in front of a large audience, people who would discuss the different sides of that issue, without taking a chance of some very volatile kinds of discussions. So we said, okay, fine, we will start small. And on February second, Tom Kraus, who is our chairman, has brought together three of the world's experts on genetically modified organisms. And we're going to, in front of two hundred people, as a guest of the Ojai Valley Inn, we are going to try this out. And Fred Bisch is going to be our moderator. And if we can make that discussion work.
Judge.
And he should, that's true. And so hopefully, he has some respect along those lines. If we can make this work, and if people can sit down and have civil discourse about very highly emotional issues, we think we can move that forward to maybe water issues next, and then ultimately to a festival. The fun part of the festival is an easy thing for us to do, and it's really basically put together. And it includes petting zoos, and wine pairings, and wine demonstrations, and cooking demonstrations, and all kinds of wonderful things. The intellectual part of it has been a little bit challenging, but with Tom Kraus, I mean, anyone who knows Tom Kraus knows he'll make that work. And so that's where we are, February second, we hope you will all be there. We will start out and see whether we can make this work, and if so, we will begin to build that to a, one day, maybe the first year, because it's all volunteer and we're working really hard. But over time, we hope it will become another weekend with the same kind of international panache that the Ojai Music Festival has, so that we can bring people from all over the world to Ojai for a very specific and wonderful reason. And then, as Barney knows, I'd like to go from there to, if we can make that work, then I would like to do a jazz festival, or a playwright's fest, a play, use the playwright's festival, have them come, I'd like to begin to build weekend events at the Bowl.
What time is that in February at the Inn?
February second at four o'clock.
Is it a Saturday?
It's a Sunday afternoon.
Your comment about the volatility of particularly the GMOs, it's huge, and I see Monsanto on here.
They would not sit down at the table, that's.
Well, you know what, that's an example of how you get the locals to come, but I don't think they pay for a ticket, I think they'd be picketing.
That's why we thought we would try this thing out in a smaller venue.
Yeah, I think maybe Union Bank and Monsanto, and maybe a more, you know, I think that maybe a more balanced sort of.
We have three people right now, mostly professors, one, a professor from Riverside, John Rulak, who has worked here and been in this community. We have people who have said that they would sit and have a civil discussion. And if we can achieve that with audience participation, I think we will have done a great deal for Ojai, period. Just because it's an important thing not to be so polarized.
Thank you.
Maybe reach out to a few more, this is traditional foods, food, and maybe more of your non-traditional food people, like Silk Soy Milk, or some of the, the more health food kind of companies that are larger, like Nature Valley, or I don't know one of the names.
Yeah, but give us the ideas. I think we've, we've got, you know, we've worked with a lot of people from Farmer, the Food.
Farmer the Cook.
Yeah, Jim Churchill, Larry Yee, we've had a lot of people on our committee who have been guiding us, because for me, this is a new deal.
Well, I'm in the food industry, and I'm aware of a lot of these other kinds of companies that could be imparted.
Feed it to us.
That are less traditional, too. So you have that kind of balance between your traditional factory food and mass-produced food tier more.
We love it.
Boutique style, yeah. I'll get you some names.
Give me, you know, I, if you don't have my email, it's ewoktel@.
Okay.
And just email it all to me, and we'll take it from there.
Okay.
Any other comments by the council? Questions or comments by anyone on the foundation?
Well, I guess my, my thought is, okay, where, where would we like to be five years from now? If things work out. We can't get there unless we know where our goal. What I'm hearing, and I think I'm agreeing with Esther, is two or, two or three in addition to the music festival, world-class events that attract lots of people, which not necessarily music is their focus. I would like, the jazz festival, to me, we already have, I don't know, hundreds of people yearning for the Bowl full of blues. So I could see how that could morph into a blues and jazz festival. We used to attract, I don't know, the Bowl would be packed for the Bowl full of blues. And we have, you know, the name of the Bowl full of blues at the Bowl, and combining a day of jazz, too, or a combo on both days. So I think that could be a world-class event that's music-focused. And then the Chautauqua event.
And Shakespeare.
And, uh, the Shakespeare.
Jane, Joan Kemper and Michael are working on.
So I think we, we can have a few of those every season. But how do we get, you know, the question is having the perhaps weekday events. Cause right now, weekends, our hotels are packed, right? So we may need like a Wednesday or a Thursday night or something like that to attract more people who have the ability or retire or whatever, to spend a Wednesday or Thursday here for some events.
Well, I have called the New West Symphony, hoping that we could get a pops night or two or three during the week because I know that's something that we need to do for.
And the Santa Barbara Corals Group, which is fantastic coral group, they're, they're interested too, performing. So, I mean, it's possible we'd get some weeknight events. And I think if people live in Santa Barbara or Ventura and are already followers of a group they see in Ventura, Santa Barbara, perhaps they would follow them up to, to Ojai too. So that's my thoughts on it. But I, I give my overall picture is where would we like to be in five years? I'd like to hear what some people have to say about that.
Barney, comments?
Well, we certainly would like to be in a situation that at one time, when, from the get-go, when we were talking about formulating the foundation, that, um, my goodness, where there were gonna be things going on five, six nights a week, the place was gonna be overrun by tourists, cars coming in to probably trigger environmental impact studies and this sort of thing. I, I don't see us there in five years. I don't know that we'll ever be there. Um, I breathe the same air, everybody. I don't, I don't wanna see that happen to Ojai. But, uh, it would be, um, certainly my goal to, to see that we have a couple, uh, festivals, uh, throughout the year. And that we, we have one or two producers that come in and do some commercial events that I think would be great. Beth did a survey and, um, to Betsy's comment about why aren't the people coming to these shows? We asked a lot of questions and none, none of the, unfortunately, we didn't ask the question, why aren't you coming? But we said, what, what do you wanna hear? Tell us what you like. And the ranking, ironically, classical music was, much to my surprise, right up there. And it was, uh, jazz and blues and country. The ticket price thing was what they really wanted, yeah. They, we mentioned they, they love free. Or, you know, could you get the Rolling Stones in here for $15?
Right, exactly. That's about.
No, it's not. It's not. Any other comments?
Yeah, you know, I, I think what we've had success with are those events, cause I think they're not coming, one is just a concert cause we're 8,000 people in Ojai and how many people like that group or that band or have heard of them, but.
You sit outside the fence and listen too.
That's true. And, and.
Everybody's local those acts.
The things we've had success with, I think, are the, the, the events that you go and there's wine tasting and the, there's some different food trucks and, oh yeah, there's people playing a concert as well. But we seem to get a better turnout, I think, at events that have more than just one thing going on. So it's, it's dinner and then they're showing a movie and then you can go get a glass of wine. And, and it becomes more of a multi, kind of a date night almost type event for people to go to. Whether they really like the music or not, it's like, hey, let's go, you know, they're gonna have some wine and cheese and, and see what it's all about. So I think a lot of our focus, you know, still has to be on trying to generate these events that just have more, that are more than just the music.
About a food truck festival.
Yep.
Yeah. Food trucks are huge.
They are.
Absolutely huge.
Wouldn't that be a fun idea?
A food truck festival and have a, and they have a cooking competition up on the stage. Seriously?
I think you have to look at it as, as a, as a combination of the bowl and the park.
Right.
Because what we can do, because we have that, is unique.
Yeah, you have food trucks in the park and then you have, not on top of Ojai trees, oak trees, mind you, but. Trucks in the park and then you have a food competition on stage and you also have some country music and some folk and.
And it's all for free.
Yeah, right.
Anyone else from the, did you have something, Beth?
I do. I just wanna, um, on, on that, which is a, a great idea. And you're right, food trucks are the bomb right now. So, um, and I can totally see that, you know, as, as an event. I think I would be remiss, um, in our conversation this evening if, um, I didn't just share a little bit. Um, and it may be, um, information that you are already aware of. I'm a, uh, part of the Ojai Visitors Bureau. I sit on that, on that committee. Um, and two things have come up, um, in terms of, um, hotel nights, we've, you know, the weekends are full. And I know, you know, Pete can attest to that. Weekends are, are not a problem for Ojai. And where I'm going with the, the Ojai Visitors Bureau is the voices of the hoteliers, the voices of the restaurateurs that sit on this committee are, are very, um, we're pressing for mid-week. Where's the mid-week activity? Um, so it's really, um, hopefully I'm not misspeaking, but in terms of, um, you know, moving forward and what's, you know, in the next five years, where will we be? I think to grow any event that happens at Libby Bowl, we absolutely need the support of our hoteliers and our restaurateurs. And all of that activity is not going to happen on the weekends because that is a non-issue for them. And all of them would tell you that. Um, so it's, you know, what, what can we do? And, and the food truck made me think of that more, um, uh, in terms of when there is food involved with an event at Libby Bowl, I almost always hear from some of the restaurateurs, uh, because that's competition. Of course, they would like to see, and rightly so, uh, dinner before a show and/or, you know, whatever afterwards. So it's, we have so many things to consider. Um, and it's, uh, so I just wanted to, to share that with you.
Thank you. Any other comments? No?
I, I miss the, the, obviously, most of this. But I mean, I, I really hope that we also recognize, I, we need to have commercial events and weekend events and things that are going to bring the economics of this community to another level that, which was the intent of Libby Bowl. But Libby Bowl was also really built by our community, for our community. And it is really important that we make sure that it is available to all of the people in the community. Cause we've had some amazingly wonderful community activities in the bowl. And, and that's equally as important to, to me anyway.
It is. And I think it's equally important to the city as well. So.
So in five years, we'd like to see perhaps one or two weekday events. Enough so that a couple coming up from Westwood Village or whatever who have the time could spend the night in Ojai and attend maybe one or two events and a wine tasting or whatever, have some sort of package which would include the arts and dining or wine tasting or something, which of course the Ojai Visitors Bureau could help us with. And if it included an event that's somehow in Libby Bowl, or it's, even if it was in the afternoon, if it's the winter, uh, could be great. Well, you know, that's retired people, they don't do.
They don't tweet. You know, you'd have to advertise an ARP.
But I mean, if they're going to come up, the hoteliers have rooms available.
At least not past nine.
But that's when the rooms are available and when things can be, right, right. I know, they don't tweet.
Barbara, we're so close to LA.
We're so close, but for people who have the time, they can do a weekday getaway to Ojai.
It's all right. We need a little loosening up.
They can definitely do a weekday getaway, even, and especially if the, if the rates for these events and the rates for the hotels are all, are weekday events. So I think that would be a good focus to, for an overnight, if not two, weekday events that, and our audience would be, that's, you know, West LA up to, including Santa Barbara or something like that. And I think there's enough newly retired people or people who have a work schedule that's flexible to allow for that. I would put that as a goal for the next five years.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Paul.
Appreciate it. Uh, it's been very educational for me to sit down with you. Mayor Protem Strobel, you were very quiet this evening.
Correct.
She's not feeling well.
And, uh, it's always a pleasure seeing everybody. Yes?
I'm feeling just fine. I have been very, very quiet. I will say that I respect the effort that you're making. I respect your contributions. I see a lot of flaws. And rather than spend time pointing those out to you, I know that you're working toward a successful venue and I support you in that.
Thank you. Yeah, but email us. We'll fix it. Laws can be fixed. Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. It's nice seeing everybody. And, uh, many-year Councilman Olson and past mayor, nice to see you.
Nice to see everybody. Thank you.
And we're gonna take a short, let's take about a five-minute break before we continue. Okay, that's fine.
Good to see you as always.
Yeah, thank you.
Nice to, nice to meet you.
Blues festival is very nice.
No, it's.
Well, we had it here.
Blues got it very, very good.
But what happened is we had to tone down the.
Can we just all sit here and go with the change?
They were here for 15 years.
Is the same one, same water, the fuson?
I don't know.
I don't know.
$25,000.
Where are you going to trivia down to Jester? All right, I'm gonna reconvene the city council for discussion item number two, which is, uh, having to do with the museum roof repair. Mr. Clark?
Thanks. As we indicated in the memo, which I'm sure you've seen, um, in going up there and inspecting the roof, we found that it's in pretty bad shape and needs to be redone. And that's about a $21,000 job or $25,000 with contingencies. So the, you know, the museum is trying to get donations towards that through the civic association, but I don't think it's worthwhile waiting. And I think we should just go ahead and, and agree to fund it. And if they get a donation, great. So I just wanted to briefly talk about the financial status of the capital improvement fund. We, we have about $2 million worth of projects this year, which is a whole heck of a lot for us. And we have about $200,000, which is our estimated ending fund balance. But that really depends on how the pricing comes out when we do our bidding and how the revenues come in. So it's a, it's a 10% um, piece, but it's not a huge, uh, amount of wiggle room in case bids come in high or revenues come in low. So it's possible that later on, after bids come in for some of the projects and we know our revenue's better, we'll talk about pacing our schedule a little bit so that some of the projects that we had thought we would do later this year, maybe go next year. So I just wanted to let you know that that's a possibility. And I think I did mention that in, in the, um, cover letter. But the, the building that we own is very valuable. And I think that even though it's not leaking right now, having a roof in bad shape isn't some, isn't where we wanna be. And since we're up there, we should do it. And that's our recommendation.
Right. I just question Greg or, or Rob, how did this first come up? When was this noticed that this particular part of the roof needed this much material?
Well, they're, they're, it, it, you know, the scaffolding and all that, they're, they're, they knew that there were some leaks and so they were up there, um, inspecting it. And so when they looked under the tiles and things like that, that's how they discovered that there was a problem.
There could be hidden damage too.
Been going on all these years, it will appear later, but, you know, well, clearly we have to do it. How much, I, I know that taxes and arrears, receiving of them, but Suzie, where are we with the TOT?
Right now?
Yeah.
This year? Okay, I have a budget.
Oh. How much?
Wonderful news. Well, I can't remember right now. I can probably.
Okay.
I, I wouldn't sit here and, and, and assume at this point in time that we'll be ahead of budget.
Oh, I will never assume that. You know me, I'm cynical.
But we're, we are, we, we were, we were pretty aggressive, we were pretty aggressive in our revenue estimate and we're tracking, um, a little bit ahead. Um, so we, we may come out with more money than we thought we would.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Clark? Mayor Protem Strobel?
I recognize the importance of this roof repair. I agree, we have to do this. I want to make sure that we don't begin a, um, a path of delaying the street overlays and improvements. Due to these unexpected projects. We have to repair this roof and I believe that we can stay on schedule with our, our street improvements.
And we, and we, we would not be proposing delaying the street improvements. We do have, um, $80,000 for restroom rehab at Libby Park and about $120,000 for, um, playground equipment. And those could, those will happen, may not even happen this year anyway. They may have to be carried over because we're working on other projects. So those are the ones that are.
I agree with her. We have to keep our eyes on the prize, which is the street in there.
I got my eyes there.
Okay.
Mayor Blatz, I, I also wanna echo Mayor, Mayor Protem Strobel's comments about keeping our eye in. And then obviously, I also agree repairing this roof. I, I just, I, I just wanna make sure that if we have already started to, if we discovered this problem when we started looking underneath the shingles, did we, did we uncover it completely? Or could there be potential damage to the roof?
Right. And, uh, and I do wanna straighten out too, that we had some damage underneath the shingles. And, uh, and that's one area, but the, the more primary areas back where they have the collections and archives, it's the back building, it's behind the chapel. And that was the area, uh, the wall seems to be, we patched that up and we think we're in decent shape for that. But it's primarily that roof on that archive building in the back. So that's the real issue. There were some trees in the back where we were moving. We had to get up on the roof. And we realized how there was some of that area was just really rotten, more than anybody had recognized, anybody flagged before.
So we really, could you really foresee more, more damage on that roof? Or will that $25,000 that were allowing?
The, uh, the rear, the rear roof, that's the primary. The roof underneath the tile is a concern. And, uh, it seems to be, according to the museum, they haven't seen any kind of leaks go through it. So there's, there's a question, I mean, they normally put heavy felt paper underneath tile. And when it gets really old, which that roof probably is, you know, 80 years old, that felt paper can kinda slowly disintegrate. So we're looking at right now, removing some of those tiles and trying to investigate that better. But it's not an immediate leak right now that anybody's aware of on that tile area.
Is that, is that adobe underneath the?
The walls, you're saying? Uh, that one appears to be solid walls. Nobody knows if it's. Yeah, we're not sure about that. We didn't know they're solid walls. They're not hollow in any way, yeah. So whether it was brick, block or cement. not hollow in any way, yeah. So, whether it was brick, block, or cement, concrete...
You don't want adobe getting wet. It's such a shame that it's been let go, because there's undoubtedly stuff that we'll stumble on as time goes on. Defer maintenance, because water's a terrible thing. It travels. You don't know where it's gone. I mean, it could have, maybe they haven't seen any leaks, but it could have run all the way down here, and over there, and down there.
That's why we're sealing all the walls, makes sure, we think that's where most of the water's getting into, some of the damage was on the interior.
Yeah, under those walls, yeah. I'm glad it's getting done. It was really making me nervous.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
One second, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to authorize expenditure... ...of up to $25,000 for repair of the museum roof. Wait a second.
All right. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Slatt?
Yes. All right, there's nothing else to come before the council tonight. Does anybody have any other comments? Mr. Clark? Mayor Protem Strobel?
I attended the VCOG meeting on your behalf...
Oh, thank you, yes.
...last week, and what I really wanted to relate was to Mr. Grant, the Caltrans representative that attends the VCTC meetings, and the VCOG meetings, had some very complimentary things to say about working with you.
Thank you.
Oh, then you can get something out of them.
All right, everybody, thank you. We are adjourned.
Go for it.
This is our last council meeting for this morning.
Yeah, not until the 10th of December, I think.